Hearing.
Got it.
All right, I'll call to order the town on Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a continuation from the hearing on October eleventh. And welcome aboard. So we'll go through introductions, do our little Zoom spiel and get right into it. Let's make introductions. I'm William Hanley, I'm Chair. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller, she's Vice Chair. We've got Dave Ashmore here, here in the room as well, and we've got Meredith Randolph online. And then also in the room, non-voting member, we've got Alan Kimmerly. And then online, we've got an alternate non-voting member, Gail Marshall. So again, thanks for joining us. And to all of you out in Zoom land, again, I'm sure we know Zoom protocol by now, but if you are on Zoom, please sign in in chat. So we just have a record of everybody who's online with us. And again, the meeting's being recorded, so we can see who's here anyhow. If you can, please keep your microphone on mute. And, you know, the, just be mindful to that chat on Zoom is not for side discussions, please. It's just very distracting and just deters from just, you know, the general process we're trying to conduct here in the meeting room. And with that, let's get going. So, item two on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. We skipped over approving the minutes last week from September twenty-seventh.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to adopt the minutes from September twenty-seventh as presented.
You've asked for a second.
All right, all those in favor, and I'm just gonna call out names because we're two-thirds here and one-third online. Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. All right, got that taken care of. Let's keep going. Item three tonight, we have a subdivision approval application. It's continued from October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. When we had a public hearing at six oh five P M. And tonight too, sub, and it's subdivision oh oh two, two thousand and twenty-three. Owner name is Mount Desert three sixty-five. Agent is Greg Johnson, G F Johnson Associates. Location is five Manchester Road, Northeast Harbor. Tax map twenty-three, lot twenty-five, zoning district Village Residential One. And the purpose is subdivision as defined is the construction or placement of three or more dwelling units on a single tract or parcel of land within a five-year period. The proposal is the construction or placement of six dwelling units on a single tract or parcel of land within a five-year period. And it's for workforce housing. And where this was a continuation, we did not have to notify a butters and advertise this. And also I failed to mention, you know, at the beginning of the hearing too, I wanted to say thank you for everybody accommodating the early release of the last hearing. I hope everybody's feeling well, and I really appreciated that. So thank you. Um, all right, let's, let's recap where we're at. So October eleventh, we rounded out the, uh, we were review of section six with section six point seven, and now we're on to section six B eight fences and walls. We need to go through all of section six. So I think six B has six, goes all the way to six B twenty. I think a lot of that is not applicable. Section six C, of course, doesn't apply as it's in the, you know, for the shoreline zone, and we're not in the shoreline zone. So after we round out section six, we kick back to section five. Right, in five point two or five point three.
You're, you're under five point two, and there's two other things you have to address. The municipal subdivision review criteria, under forty-four oh four.
Right.
A dialogue with the applicant as to whether the project is or is not subject to the main site location development. I don't believe it is, but I want the details before them. And then, and then on the five point three.
You got it.
I think those would be fairly sufficient review criteria to forty, forty-four oh four, many of which you've covered.
All right, so let's get going. So section six B eight fences and walls. Those six B eight talks about, well, fences and walls. And just to, you know, summarize it from land use ordinance, it talks about that a solid fence is opposed to a rail or similar fence or wall more than four feet high, measured vertically from the ground directly beneath the fence wall shall require code enforcement permit or conditional use approval. And such fences or walls shall not unduly restrict scenic views. And the structural side of the fence shall not face the public view. And perhaps the applicant could talk about fences and walls for the record.
You'll have, chapter thirteen, there isn't existing wooden fence. There, there's a, and that wooden fence will often be extended to the south. More of the south easily cornered, like you can do it. Uh, so if you want to take it, go to cap thirteen. I'll also point out in the page, um, leave it to in our narrative, we indicate that we understand that still solid fence and wall require an official condition use permit. Um, but in that thirteen, you'll see the distant fence and then it will be it will be solid, it will be greater than six feet tall. And the structural is probably double sided, but definitely the structural side we face into the property, the clean side out.
What's the height of the fence?
And then you'll come back for a separate condition use approval for that. Any questions from the board on section six B eight fences and walls?
So I take it the proper form of the motion would be that the project will require future conditional use approval. Otherwise, the board is not conducting a review at this time.
And it'd be great if a planning board member could make that motion.
Can I say so moved?
That works for Heidi.
Yeah, I think so. Project will require for future conditional.
Use permit.
Future conditional. Do the approval.
Approval.
Use approval. Okay, so the project will require future conditional use approval. And therefore is, will not be discussed at this time? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, maybe it'd be good to just add this factoid, uh, greater than six feet tall, but will secure a future conditional use approval. Because it has not been finally designed. I understood the applicant. Yep. It's kind of in that category, I think, Heidi members of the board of N A is just.
Uh, so the motion is that the fence will be greater than six feet tall. But because, but because the fence has not been, I'm sorry. Uh, but the fence will require for future conditional use approval because the fence design is not. Finally.
And, and further that uh, the motion is that the standard is not applicable at this time. I think that's sensitive. I defer to you as Chair, Vice Chair.
Sounds good, Andy. So Tracy, own that motion, and then.
Nate Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Nate Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. All right. Section six B nine. Individual private campsites is the applicant. None requested, so. Your motion that in a, that section six B nine is not applicable.
Section six B nine is not applicable because it's not been requested. Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Six B ten home occupations and home offices.
I think that, that section basically requires you to request that you need a permit from the code officer in that condition to apply. We're not requesting a home occupation at this time, and if it did, it would be a code officer permit.
Therefore, section six B ten is N A.
And so moved Tracy Keller.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
So William Hanley, I. Six B eleven lots.
We go to this part two, does that apply?
So it's, well, let's well, six B ten home occupations and home offices that had two parts, home occupation or home office and bed and breakfast. I assume you're not proposing a bed and breakfast. So I, I think our motion can stand.
Okay.
And all right. So we had a motion and a finding. Motion second finding. So six B eleven lots. And, okay, so minimum lot size, see section three point five, and perhaps the applicant can let us know about lots.
Five, uh, you have the minimum lot size in the district.
Have five in your application.
Have five in the application. All right. Thirty-nine thousand two hundred. With the outside of ten thousand thirty.
You know, and it's curious, because when it says section, see section three point five.
That's three point six.
Yeah. I, well, it's I don't think there is a section three point five in the land use ordinance.
It is three point five, yeah.
It is. Yeah, it's the table. Right, so it's got it. There you go. The table, this label, section three point five. And with that, the minimum. Can you, can you restate that, Greg, please, about the?
The R one district?
Yeah.
So three point five, it's what, it runs into sixteen lots. One, section three point five, six point five on the table, we are one million lots out of this and that.
And the total lot size is point nine acres.
Thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty.
Shown on the tab five. Survey. Great. Any questions from the board on that? So they keep flipping so much here. The talks, six B eleven goes to talk, goes on to talk about access and that, you know. Lots created on or after May fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
So, well.
Yeah, go, please.
Just turning the, uh, the book prior that it was a driveway access, and a driver access was greater than a million. Um, we had, remember, fire chief, uh, I understand, but fire, right? And then so streets on all sides, this is a new desk, one, like, before you fire discussed, regarding the fire chief, so A is a lot that was created after, um, two thousand, I mean, before, two thousand and fifteen. It does have an accessway that's greater than driver, department group of ward is already voted driveway. And we have, um, like, engaged in the fire chief, it's kind of around the all sides.
It's, uh, maybe academics, uh. Question I have through the chairs to the applicant is this. Was this lot that essentially is an amalgamation, I think, five lots? Was that amalgamation, that accumulation of lots, was that accomplished before twenty fifteen?
It was finished in nineteen seventy.
So it would be the first, excuse me, be the second provision, access to subsection two. Lots created before nineteen six, two thousand and fifteen. And that, that accumulated lot didn't change after the nineteen seventy. So that's the current lot that began with the, is the nineteen seventy. I don't think it really changes anything, but, um, because the applicant indicated this property is accessed by both public ways and then returning by driveway. And the key is, is that access appropriate? Does it work for that cumulative law in the view of the state, uh, in the view of the, uh, uh, fire chief as, as confirmed by the code officer? So if you want to ask him, um, does what Greg presented to the board reconcile with what she means?
Yeah. Greg, have you consulted the fire chief about that, or is there? Yeah. And how'd that go?
Um, and that's our testimony, so, um, we, to explain, we have a hydrogen, which right off at the side of the corner.
Yeah.
Got two major roads on either side of us, plus an internal drive. Uh, they normally would, um, you know, they have plenty of access, they're no, both is around two hundred feet long. And they have access all five, six levels.
Mr. Burns, it seems like you have a comment about, uh, lots, six B eleven.
Um, so, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you. The, so, uh, section, uh, subsection one here, minimum lot size, I would, uh, remind the board that, uh, faith on the prior testimony and prior evidence that we submitted. Uh, this is a six-unit subdivision, uh, that will not meet the minimum lot size standard unless uh, under, uh, the applicant's theory, the density bonus applied to these lots. Uh, the question of whether or not this, uh, application meets the minimum lot standard is wrapped up in the question of whether, uh, the density bonus is appropriately calculated, uh, in the application. Um, there was a robust discussion of that question, uh, by, uh, all parties and the board, uh, back in the September meeting, um, where the crux of the discussion was whether, uh, the applicant incorrectly used a fractional unit of, uh, the base density in multiplying the bonus density requirement uh, in determining that they could legally place six lot, uh, six units uh, within the subdivision, um, under the Luso, under the subdivision ordinance. So I understand that those standards pull, that pulls in um, some of the, uh, objective standards from subdivision provision, but I would, uh, implore the board not to read past that minimum lot size question, because certainly what is being proposed is too dense to otherwise meet the standards in the Luso unless the, uh, density bonus is applied. So it is a part and parcel issue. Um, and, uh, I know the board had a robust discussion about that, uh, but I'd be happy to walk the board again through uh, our interpretation of the ordinance provision, um, and how it relates to the density bonus calculation.
Andy?
You're, you're gonna be looking at density when you return to the standards of section five of the subdivision ordinance. And so, um, this is a question, I think, of whether the proposed development parcel um, referred to as, if you will, the accumulation lot, um, complies with a minimum lot standard. There's different questions going on.
Yeah.
It burns is, is, gonna have a chance to argue later on the, um, application of the density bonus.
I, I would agree with that assessment. I think we're gonna touch upon that in a later section.
Fair enough. I would, uh, I would request then, uh, hearing the chair, I request that the board, um, forbear on making a vote as to the applicability of the section until, uh, section five is discussed, uh, but I understand that uh, you do intend to discuss the density provision elsewhere. Um, otherwise, uh, the butters, uh, would, uh, restate our, uh, objections to the, uh, the road accessway, uh, when it's, uh, maintenance of safe access required for these emergency vehicles. Uh, we would encourage the board, uh, to, again, uh, view this as a road, uh, and also, uh, observe the parking plan for this subdivision in relation to a potential emergency, uh, for fire and maintenance and access. Thank you.
Mr. Plague?
Thank you, uh, Daniel Plague, for the applicant. I, I've now sat through a couple of, uh, installations in this review hearing after the record was closed, after the public hearing was closed, when the board and uh, board counsel has implored us to stop arguing. Um, and, uh, to point out, um, evidence or point out facts in response to board questions. What I just heard was all arguments. Um, everybody had their opportunity of public hearing. I'd like to be able to help the board facilitate movement through this very lengthy process so that we can get a result. And I'd ask the board to, uh, to hold us to the, uh, to the, just answer board questions and point out facts. Don't argue, um, rules that you imposed on us earlier.
Hey. And six B eleven. And I have to keep switching reading lessons, um. So we just went through six B eleven, um, one and two. And there's a, um, section six B eleven three, and that talks about requirements for lots wholly outside the shoreline zone. And for instance, um, section six B eleven three, one lots budding more than one road. You know, that the, uh, you know, it talks about that the lots that above one and one road shall have the required setbacks along each road as an entrance or exit, two dimensional requirements, one and two family dwellings. So let's, let's first talk about one, um, about the required set bot, setbacks along each road. And Greg, just for the record, could you explain those, please? Amos set a tab in the application.
So decide plan under tab ten. More different than parts than the, um, side setback. So the, uh, probably setback is ten feet. By road, they step back to twenty, but you see along the roadway, it follows the edge of the travel way rather than this ten feet. Where there is not a road, um, you can put a setback to five. And so I guess that's where you can see it.
Yep. Sign the plan, and then, um, six B eleven, three, two, dimensional requirements with one family and two family dwellings. One family and two family dwellings are allowed in all districts as indicated in section three point four. Subject to the following, all dimensional requirements shall be met separately for each and every one family dwelling on a lot. All dimensional requirements shall be met separately for each and every two family dwelling on a lot. Then there's an exception, um, for any existing or new lot that's outside the shoreline zone. One accessory residential dwelling unit is allowed per lot with an increase in minimum lots without an increase in the minimum lot size requirement. Accessory residential dwelling units are incidental and subordinate to the principal use or structure may be no more than seventy-five percent of the living area, the primary dwelling unit. The accessory residential dwelling unit shall meet town and state standards, waste water disposal and the lot, which the accessory residential structure is located, shall conform to the current minimum lot size. And so, um, are we proposing any accessory residential dwelling units?
Well, I'll propose any accessory residential dwelling.
And, um, could you talk then about the the dimensional requirements of one and two family dwellings?
So I think, uh, we did, we did get through the fact that the road, uh, setback were five. And the plan that we pointed to in cap ten. I feel setback building, building, we grow on five. The other dimensional standard which does apply is principal building setbacks. Uh, that district requires principal building setbacks twenty feet. You'll see dimension between those buildings, their, the buildings are more like, uh, between fifty-one feet, one eight feet, um, from building, building. So the, the dimensional parts of table three, five of that, um, including the principal building.
Let's turn on sheet, uh, C one and tab ten. Uh, moving on, six B eleven, three, three, minimum area suitable for development. Talks about that each lot shall have sufficient area for the construction of buildings without utilizing wetlands. Any floodplains that are used for construction of buildings shall be subject to requirements, this amount other floodplain management ordinance. The applicant shall be responsible for documenting compliance with this requirement. And the required area shall be located outside of any setback areas, so.
So we have, uh, you have a wetland assessment exhibit seventeen, um.
What's, what's the tab on that?
Like being.
Yeah.
What does tab seventeen say? As to well.
So tab seventeen is the letter. So tab seventeen is the letter from boys environmental services.
Yeah, the summary and findings on the last page.
It's summary of findings, uh, first sentence says, we did not find any protected resources on this site.
So we did both burnables and weapons, correct? Yeah, so you got any protected resources that signals to me, this is a parcel that does not have wetlands.
Or streams. Yeah, or wetlands of special significance.
What about flood plains? Any flood plains?
Do you have uh, the FEMA map? You have four. Those are the books, books is what I'm doing.
That's step four.
Yeah, it's the third page of tab four. We all good with that? Yeah. Good with that so far, Meredith?
All good.
Right. Let's go on to six B eleven, three, four. Lot lines and subdivisions, all lot lines budding the road and subdivision proved after. March fourth nineteen ninety-seven shall run to the middle of the roads right away.
We're proposing to know. That provisions put on it so that no man has gets locked and running ways for the back pole.
Yeah.
And the third thought is this is a developmental subdivision.
Yeah. Agreed. That's N A, um. Item four, requirements for lots wholly or partially within the shoreline zone. That's all N A. You're not in the shoreline zone. You're in the village residential one zone. So that concludes section six B eleven lots. Any?
Oh.
Yeah.
That all the standards of section six B eleven lots has been met?
Can I add a little bit of a, a preface to that? Um, um, Meredith, just saying based on the evidence presented and then what you said.
Based on the evidence presented, I thought, we find that all of the standards of six B eleven lots has been met.
There is.
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, we mainly, aye. Moving on, six B twelve. Manufactured homes. Manufactured homes are housing as defined in section eight, which are structures to be used for residential occupancy and have a pitched shingle roof. A permanent foundation or masonry slab, piers or walls. And exterior siding of clapboard, cedar shingles, wooden or vinyl material that is residential in appearance are permitted.
There's no standard. It's just a permission.
Okay.
But are there any manufactured homes?
The ordinance defines under the definition section, um, manufactured homes have chassis. It actually does define the term. Both factors to not have a chassis. That we don't like to age. Uh, it has ten definitions.
The data standboulds require they have a chassis.
Well, the year, there you go. There is one for the land use advisory committee. Right, so.
In a.
Six B twelve, and everybody good that that one's N A. So we've had a motion and finding. On that previously, so.
Okay, um, Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion that, um, part six B twelve manufacturers home is N A.
Can you add the tag, um, um, member office, since no units proposed use a chassis?
Oh, since no units propose a chassis.
Steve Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Steve Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye.
That's your relief with this next one.
That is funny. Six B thirteen, mineral extraction and exploration. Quaring activities are regulated by the town of Mount Desert Quaring License Ordinance. Are you? Mister Plaguey, why don't you address that?
We're not proposing any uh, mineral extraction or exploration.
All right, so that's probably N A then, thankfully.
That's um, part six B thirteen is N A as applicant does not propose any. Uh, quarreling activities or mineral, mineral extraction. Oh, that's, where's the mineral extraction?
Yeah, it's in the.
Okay, there, either one.
So six B thirteen is N A as no mineral extraction, exploration or quarreling activities are proposed.
Steve Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Steve Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Six B fourteen, mobile homes, temporary campers, trailers. And recreational vehicles. No temporary or older mobile, mobile home camper trailer or other recreational vehicles shall be used for human habitation. Unless it's in a campground or a trailer, trailer park, which has been established in accordance with provisions of this ordinance. Would the applicant care to speak about that?
The offer to turn this temporary both in the heading and the first sentence, so nothing we're proposing is separate.
So six B fourteen is N A. Anybody care to make a motion on that, just the, for consistency's sake?
Six, uh, Tracy Keller, uh, uh, make a motion that, um, six B fourteen mobile homes, temporary campers, trailers and recreational vehicles. Is not applicable as none of these structures are temporary.
Steve Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, or all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. It's thrown me off, Dave, for being an in person here. I love it. So six B fifteen, sanitary standards. What that talks about is availability of public sewer. All plumbing systems within two hundred feet of a public sewer shall be connected to a public sewer. Were available in accordance with local state. And federal laws and regulations, planning board may waive this requirement if all other standards of section six A and applicable standards of six B are met. And then it goes on to talk about the state standards, all subsurface sewage disposal facilities shall be installed in conformance. You're not. Putting in any subject fields or subsurface sewage disposal facilities, you're.
Six, six B fifteen, one, uh, we are within two hundred feet of, of public sewer and are connecting. Uh, that is shown on the utility plans of tab ten. You also have a letter pass the from, uh, the public, uh, work.
You could say any on this based upon my experience with this style of provision, but I think it may be better in light of. The fact that the record is.
Let's have a motion that the standard has been met.
Uh, Tracy Keller, I make a motion that a part six B fifteen sanitary standards has been met. As the applicant. Will connect everything to the nearby sewer system and. In their. In their uh, documents here, they show that, um, the Mount Desert Water District. Has reviewed the plans to connect. And they have, um. Illustrated their, these plans on, uh, the site utility and geometric plan, C one.
You could use the short form of the motion number color that we've been doing.
We've been pretty specific, though.
Oh, but she's called it out, so we'll make sure we, uh, pick it up in the notes, but I'd like the summary motions to simply say. Based upon the evidence presented, if that's what you want, uh, the standard is not.
And then we make a specific.
Call out the evidence here exactly. Call out the evidence before the summary motion is made. That's correct. And.
Okay.
And member Keller did that well. I would, didn't mean to throw you off in your cadence. So, thank you, Tracy.
Great. Got that motion, Heidi.
Well, based on the evidence presented, uh, section six B fifteen standard, sanitary standards have been met. Is that all we want? Do we want to go on with the evidence?
I, I, I think it's in your minutes and it's in my notes as well in terms of which uh, plans. Followed up, so.
Okay.
Tab ten, she's seen. Right, so we had a motion.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Dave got the second. All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Right, moving on, six B sixteen sign regulations.
Can we just ask if there are any signs?
I was just gonna do that, Andy.
Yeah, cause that, this is a long provision. I didn't.
I was, I wasn't going to.
Okay, good.
Are there any signs proposed?
The only signs proposed are the road signs, which are exempt under six B sixteen two. Uh, which would be municipal authorized directional signs in the public right of way. Basically, the sign to access way.
So. So six B sixteen is N A.
Right.
Want a, based on evidence presented, I make a motion that six B.
Yes, please.
Change is not applicable.
Steve Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Uh, yes, six B eighteen wireless communication facilities. Are you proposing any?
Not proposed.
So six B eighteen is N A.
So seventeen has gone from the ordinance.
Seventeen. Did I miss that? Six seventeen.
Unregistered vehicles.
Didn't want to miss anything.
Yeah, thanks. That's like one sentence on the bottom of page six eighteen.
Agreed.
I think they're planning on decorating the place with old abandoned vehicles, so.
Yeah, so let's, let's. Section six B seventeen, vehicles unregistered. No more than two unregistered or uninspected vehicles shall be stored on any residential lot. Unless said vehicles cannot be viewed from any public way.
Is there anything in the covenants associated with this project that would prevent you from having two or more? Um, unregistered, uninspected vehicle. I mean, this is state law, so you really can't do this, but, um, is there anything that? Is in the application that addresses your standard?
You haven't asked to have any unregistered vehicles on the property? If, if I may, the, the, kind of the covenants, um, that the, that the board has, um, require that, um, you know, just.
So I, I, I'd say based on the evidence presented, N A, not applicable. None are proposed, none will be allowed for simple, the covenants.
I say so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, we mainly, aye. Now, back to my favorite section. Besides six B thirteen, um. Since B eighteen wireless communication facilities, are there any wireless communication facilities proposed? So six B eighteen is N A.
So moved, Tracy Keller.
Steve Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, we mainly, aye. Yeah, that is a long section.
Is there any animal husbandry that's proposed, or is it limited by the covenants?
Yeah, so six B nineteen is animal husbandry two in the village commercial and shoreline. Commercial districts and we are in neither of those districts. So it's six B nineteen is N A.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Six B twenty. Mobile food vendors, are there any mobile food vendors proposed? There are no mobile food vendors proposed, so section six B twenty is N A.
So moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
And myself, William Manley, aye. Six B twenty-one, rooming house. Are there any rooming houses proposed? So six B twenty-one is N A.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Six B twenty-two, hotels and motels. Are there any hotels or motels?
That propose.
So six B twenty-two is N A.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Steve Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith.
Randolph, aye.
And myself, William Manley, aye. So soldiering on to section six C of the land use ordinance. And that is all about shoreline zoning standards. I would say that all of section six C is N A, as we are not in the shoreline zone. We are in the. Village residential one zone.
Could, could I ask a, um, a detailed question? Can you get evidence from the applicant as to why the shoreline zone definition of the ordinance does not apply? I think that's pretty clear, but it'd be nice to have that finding on your record.
And four.
So capital of the map, which shows we are in a D R district instead of a shoreline district. Then the what under sentence also shows that there's no stream in the books, safe shoreline district. Or in a uh, maybe to the shoreline, uh, zoning standards within two hundred thirty feet.
You had earlier cited the noise that established that?
Seventeen.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
So perhaps a
Based on the evidence presenting.
Based on the evidence presented, perhaps a motion that section six C shoreline zoning standards are N A.
Uh, Tracy Keller, I make a motion that based upon that, based on evidence presented, um, six section sixty C, um, shoreline zoning standards are N A.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Hey, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, we mainly I. And because we are not in the shoreline zone, uh, sections five point nine is N A, which we get kicked to if we are in the shoreline zone. Just for a nice clean record, what do we have a motion to? Section five point nine.
Uh, section five point, I Tracy Keller, I make a motion that section five point nine, uh, is N A because
Of the subdivision ordinance.
No, no. Yeah, so if we're if we are in the shoreline zone, then we have the section five point nine standard.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
Yeah.
I apologize. I see how you're doing. Thank you.
Anyway.
There it is, the standard for the shoreline zone, under the land use ordinance. You should make that clear, five point nine, proper land use.
Tracy.
So moved.
All right, good.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Yep. All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I.
I see where you did that. What's the provision, uh, set of standards?
Yeah.
You want to make clear those standards in the land use ordinance, five point nine would apply. Yeah, thank you.
Because we're gonna get kicked back to section five of the subdivision ordinance, but I would assume as we have finished section six now, now we're gonna go to the state statute. Forty four oh four.
Correct. And as I said last time, a lot of five point two addresses. Whether we're whether this project is a subdivision is defined in the site location act, if there is something the applicant can direct us to that addresses that question, we could deal with that before we get to the municipal subdivision review standard in section forty four oh four.
So I don't think reiterating what is already codified in state statute, new information and so site law is triggered when you create a structure, structures defined by site laws, uh, three acres or more of a impervious surface. Uh, the parcel is hundred acre foot. Doesn't qualify as a structure defined by site law. Um, the other way to trigger, um, site water could be thirty acres and fourteen lots, all single family, which the project is not, you can also trigger site bar being twenty acres and mixed. Um, more than five or five lots, so twenty five acres, um, with parcel and one family, so uh, those are codified, um, so basically the lot size itself excluded, um, uh, regulated by site law. I don't, so that's our presentation.
So if what I heard from the applicant is correct, um, and given that section five point two cites you to the statute that you're in one to make your finding on, you would take something based on the evidence presented under section five point two of the subdivision ordinance. The threshold, um, the project does not exceed the thresholds um, of thirty eight M R S A, section forty two, and therefore that law is not applicable to the project.
We read. Give that explanation.
I mean, it can be rephoned probably better than what I just articulated, but that was the essence.
So remember to keep our microphones off in Zoom land. So five two conformance with other laws, regulations, and it says if the proposed subdivision meets the definition of a subdivision as defined in in the Site Location Act Title Thirty Eight, M S R A, section four eighty two. It does not.
Please, it was three acres, twenty acres, or thirty acres.
So the the
I'm I'm listening.
Yeah, so it's a non, it's, um, it's a non-land division and it doesn't meet the again, the Site Location Act Title Thirty Eight, M S R A, section forty four eighty two, and therefore, um.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I like the way you just stated it, um, just to say, based on evidence presented, the proposed subdivision does not meet the definition of the subdivision as defined in the site location act. Okay, cuz that's what the standard says. And if I can do second sentence.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
I do not have a motion. It's you guys are speaking faster than I can write.
Given the evidence presented, the plans do not meet the standard of the s- uh, site location.
The proposed subdivision.
Proposed subdivision. Okay. Doesn't meet the definition of subdivision as defined in the site location.
Find in the site location act.
Correct. Comma. Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Title thirty eight. Yeah, comma. M R S A. Comma. Section four eighty two. Yep. There therefore, i- is N A or the standard?
No, I think that's a sufficient finding.
Okay.
Because essentially you're taking that piece of the five point two standard that's in the second sentence and you're just saying this this subdivision is not a subdivision under state law, under the state V P administrative site location. Yeah, you've got it. That's an
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right. All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. However, we do need to now jump to forty four oh four.
Just for final cleanup, we're going to forty four oh four, which is the municipal subdivision review that are implicated by five point two. Is there any aspect of this project that requires any other state from the head of the site law?
None.
Could you be a bit more specific? Typically, stormwater would apply, but it doesn't because.
So first, we went through the N R P A, the regulation, which the wetland assessment confirmed, we've just gone through site law that will allow the threshold uh, chapter five hundred, why would be a disturb or impervious one acre or point nine acres, so that's five hundred. So why would not apply? But you know, we can see, you can see.
So does the applicant team pretty much, um, saying to the board, there is no state permit required for this project based upon the information you presented, you know, that has presented the application. Because I think the board could just make a finding, there is no other state permit required for the project, cuz in first sentence says, in conformance with all pertinent local state and federal ordinances, we'll get the federal next, which is gonna be as brief as this one. We're trying to make sure that we cover state and federal law. Almost there, then we can get to the
Or so we need a motion saying that there's no other state approval required for this application.
Yep, based on the applicant's, uh, based based on the evidence presented.
Based on the evidence presented by the applicant, there is no other state approval required.
Okay, Tracy Keller, I make a motion that based upon evidence presented, there's no other state approval required.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I.
Then one last one for based on the evidence presented, there is no federal approval required. If if that's the, if that's the, um, um, uh, representation of the applicant, that this project doesn't require anybody.
So you have evidence, uh, that we are applying of the National Historical Preservation Act, that you're a binder, and no cultural or historical impacts that is under tab. That wasn't
So rather than saying on this one that there's no other federal approval required, it may be even more accurate to say that the project complies with federal law.
No federal permitting required.
No federal permitting.
Jurisdiction, on the board of jurisdiction will come into, um, affect the impact of a adjacency to a protected resource or impact to an inland water body. Um, the natural store conservation, I think, is settled as well, that we have a letter saying, tabbed like that, not no impact.
What tab is that?
Tab.
Tab, tab.
It's administered by many, many sort of things, it might be.
So so based upon the evidence submitted, there is no further federal permitting required for this application.
Uh, based upon the evidence presented, there is no further federal permitting required for the this project.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
And myself, William Manley, I. Now do we get to go to forty four oh four?
We certainly do.
Right. I'm gonna borrow, I'm gonna share Dave's.
Where are we going?
Um.
Federal statute.
Forty four oh four.
Yeah.
Title thirty eight, did did did. Yeah, I believe the code officer had earlier.
He did.
This the municipal subdivision review standards. Um, so you should look for an email from Kim.
This afternoon.
To the board, okay. So it's
And Dave was good enough to print that email.
No, I have copies, I have to.
Yeah, you did. Thanks.
Yep.
Two. Is forty four oh four new review criteria?
It's it was repositioned, um, title thirty used to be the municipal, um, title of the main center, it's who would move the title thirty eight. Okay, ever since it's been the title thirty eight, it's been some years ago, I think nineteen eighty nine, written before that.
Okay.
Forty four oh four is existed.
So here we are, M R S, M R S, title thirty dash A, section forty four oh four, review criteria. What that talks about is that when when adopting any subdivision regulations and when reviewing any subdivision for approval, the municipal reviewing authority shall consider the following criteria and before granting approval, must determine that one. Item one, pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution in making this determination, it shall at least consider the elevate, A, the elevation of land above sea level relative to floodplain, B, the na- nature of soils and subsoils, and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, C, the slope of the land and its effect on effluence, D, the availability of streams for disposal of effluence, and E, the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations. Perhaps Greg, you could walk us through that quickly.
So tab, tab four, you know that we're not in any floodplain, you can see that determination in one A, forty four oh one A. Uh, forty four, uh, one Z nine, so sometimes it's a waste disposal. We not requested to have any of some sort of waste, okay, for that type of, we don't believe, but maybe. See, so the land and its effect on effluence, that's specifically, um, related to sewage effluence were, uh, not exposed to any effluence. Um, and the, uh, have seventeen, which has the noise reports that the availability for streams for disposal, I don't know, there are no streams outside. And the last one is the local health and water resource rule regulation. Um, I believe that the what will state, uh, rules we just went through, local health and water resource rule would be your, um, your review under six, uh, um, probably so more management and control. Those are the only ones I can, um, see if we can one E address.
So perhaps a motion some of that section forty four point one. Based on the the evidence submitted by the applicant, section forty four point one pollution. The standards of section forty four point one pollution have been met.
Yep, to shorten that up, you know, a little bit tighter, based on the evidence presented, standard is not, cuz then you can go down through these more narrowly. It's based on evidence presented, standard is not.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. So forty four oh four point two, sufficient water. The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. Greg.
They got a letter from the, um, water district, uh, testing in the tab nine that there's, uh, adequate water, um, in public water supply of the property.
Uh, Tracy Keller, uh, based upon the, uh, evidence prevent presented, a section forty four oh four, other review criteria to number two, sufficient water, um, has been met.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I, and forty four oh four point three is kind of redundant because that talks about municipal water supply. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on. An existing water supply if one is to be used.
It would be the same evidence and it's only the finding that needs to be made again.
Uh, based upon the evidence, um, provided. Uh, section, uh, three, uh, forty four oh four. Um, number three municipal water supply, uh, that's standard has. Been met.
We bash more second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
David, David Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Handley, I. Forty four oh four. Point four. Erosion. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water. So that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results.
Dividate, we have provided. Turning specifications on erosion. A little more, exhibit sixteen, uh, described the methodologies to reintroduce, uh, water for infiltration purposes. You go to the sixteen and eighteen, um, the threat like. Go more and erosion control.
Did you say eight or sixteen?
Uh, I said eight and sixteen.
Okay.
Um, Tracy Keller, based upon the evidence presented, section forty four oh four. Number four erosion, um, the standard has been met.
They bash more second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
They bash more, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four. Point five, traffic. The proposed subdivision will not cause. Unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of the highways. Or public roads existing or proposed, and if. The proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances onto a state or state aid highway. Located outside the urban compact area of an urban compact municipality. As defined by title twenty three, section seven five four. The Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the. Driveways or entrances conform to title twenty three, section oh seven oh four. And any rules adopted under this section.
Do we have an entrance onto a state or state aid highway?
You did not.
And it's just the first part of the standard you need to address?
Yes.
That fourteen. Through our period, you might have five to six more vehicles entering and exiting the project. Report you were doing previously.
F fourteen is the. Traffic im- im- impact assessment by Diane Moribito.
I make a motion based on the evidence presented, that. Uh, the criteria of. Section five, traffic has been met. Or is it not applicable?
Well, I think that's this, that's the proper form of motion. Now it's up to the.
Basically Keller second.
All those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
David Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Handley, I. Session six sewage disposal.
The second form of the standard that's applicable.
Yeah, the proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage to waste disposal will not cause an unreasonable burden on municipal services.
That's how you have a, a letter. Wait, water department. Evidence in adequate capacity.
I make a motion that, uh, for section four four oh four point six sewage disposal. Uh, the standard has been met.
Based on evidence presented.
Based on evidence presented, yes.
They lash more second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Handley, I. Section seven forty four oh four. Municipal solid waste disposal. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipal municipalities. Ability to disposal. Solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized, they are, we have. Crash pickup here in town of Mount Desert.
A letter of adequate capacity from the Acadia Civil District.
I make a motion that based on the evidence presented, that, uh, the standard of. Six, uh, of section seven municipal. Solid waste disposal has been met.
Tracy Keller second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
They bash more, I.
Myself, William Handley, I.
Just so the board knows that, that counsel to the board is equally critical of state laws, they use subjective criteria.
Well, Andy, I was.
There is.
I was just going to have a little comment about that, but here we go. Section eight of forty four oh four aesthetic, cultural and natural values. So what that talks about is that the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect. On the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites. Significant wildlife habitat identified by the. I'm gonna call. Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Or, or the municipality or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. Or any public rights for physical and visual access to the shoreline. You don't have the physical and visual access to the shoreline. And. Perhaps Greg, you can talk about the other criteria.
So we investigated a tab, uh, let's see. Have a lot of, you have the letters from, uh, like this and this going in fights. Uh, main H P C is waiting, we've also, uh, have a letter from main inland creatures and wildlife. There's no critical habitat within the project area. Um, and well, such a natural areas program. Part of company, they're aware about ten features, document, but facility. I think the, um. Date and federal agencies dressed, I mean, the aesthetic and cultural natural values have to be addressed. I think the board should discuss aesthetics. Um, in way that in conjunction with the, uh, letters from the, uh, agencies and tab eleven.
So I would assume, or I understand, Andy, that the section eight. When it's talking about aesthetics, it's talking about that we're not messing up any scenic areas, any, um. Historical sites, any, I, you know, identified wildlife habitats and the natural beauty of the area. Can turn, you know.
That's correct.
We're not talking about aesthetics in terms of. It relating to other structures or anything like that, we're talking about it in the.
The standard has typically been used to, um, evaluate. Uh, effect on views across iconic sites. Um, and it don't look the same as if you hold a neighborhood. Or districts compatibility or standard in six A one, this is more for what folks would consider to be, we're truly. Seen a kind of the duty of the, uh, of, of areas evaluated.
I would agree with that assessment.
This letter, this letter from the, uh, Department of the Interior speaks about bird migration. Not in any negative aspect, just that's, that's the type of, um, thing they're concerned with.
Any discussion on that, Meredith?
I'll make a motion if you want.
Go for it.
Based on the evidence presented, I will make a motion that. Uh, section eight, uh, aesthetic, cultural and natural values, um. That the standard has been met.
They bash more second.
All those in favor, Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
They bash more, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Handley, I.
Here's the next on the real standard.
Uh, yes. Nine. Section nine of forty four oh four. Conformity with local ordinances and plans. That says that the proposed subdivision conforms with the duly adopted. Subdivision regulation or ordinance, comp plan, development plan or, or land use plan, if any. In making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret, interpret these ordinances and plans.
So there is a, um, very notable law decision involving the town of Freiburg. Poland Springs. And like the court had in that decision is that comprehensive plans. Provide the goals of the community, the ordinances provide the regulatory team. And when, um, a planning board went a long ways down the road of using a comprehensive plan. To measure conformity of the project with the plan, the law court said. The ordinances provide the regulatory, regulatory team, the plans provide the goal, so. It's always been viewed by the growth management plan experts in May. That what's going on with zoning ordinances is they implement the comprehensive plan. The ordinances are what you use, this, this standard is a holdover, the legislature has not amended it. But the law court has construed. That we don't test conformity with a comprehensive plan in the context of a project or the. Um, so I think in the context of this standard, you should pay most attention to local ordinances. If you find something is grossly inconsistent with a comprehensive plan. Maybe you might entertain, um, that consideration, but, um, again, the town of Freiburg case is a strong precedent.
So it's talking about more than just the comp plan, it's.
No, just, I wanted to take the comp plan, um, out of the discussion.
Okay.
Less, this board found a real inconsistency with the.
So, so. So I've got two questions on that, um. How do you handle where we haven't gone through all of the subdivision ordinance yet?
You could make this a conditional motion that would put it into effect if you completed your review on the subdivision. It would be something like, um, pending. Uh, completion of section five review under the subdivision ordinance. Uh, the board finds that based upon the evidence presented, the standard is not. Such that if you didn't find compliance under section five, that would not be an effective motion. That was, it would relate back to the term of the motion.
And. And then my second question is, what, what about when the board? Had a finding that was not unanimous on a previously reviewed section of the land use ordinance?
All, all it's required is a majority action of anybody. Um, so it doesn't have to be unanimous.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mister Burns, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just, I, I, uh, I, attorney general's suggestion about how to take this up, uh. The butters don't have any specific objection to that, uh, we will. Uh, propose holding, we're final review of the standard until you review all other ordinances that are on point. To determine whether or not the standard is met, um, just as an alternative to what was proposed by attorney.
So should we have a motion, Andy, then, that we? Will return back to section. Nine of forty four oh four, once we have a finding on the remaining. Subdivision ordinance sections.
Given the language of the standard, I actually think that would be cleaner anyways, says the proposed subdivision conforms. With a duly adopted subdivision regulation ordinance, you can't really find that until you've gone through all sections of the.
Yeah.
So I thought I looked at these subdivision standards closely, not to get through all of them. But I don't think it's a big deal to come back and now, and after you do your review of the section five subdivision.
Got it. Sounds like a motion.
So I can just say a motion to defer, um, action as to this review standard. Until you've completed your section five subdivision.
Section, okay, I make a motion to defer, um, defer. Determination on section nine conformity with local ordinances and plan. Section nine conformity with local ordinances and plans.
Yep.
Until we have finished section five of the.
Subdivision.
Subdivision ordinance.
They bash more second.
All those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
They bash more, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Yes. So it's seven thirty, would there be any objections if we took a quick five minute cough break? So motion, we need a.
A second.
All right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Handley, I.
Can you turn the page just so I can double check?
All right, I'll call up a meeting back to order from our. Eight minute cough break. So here we, we've got. So just looking at forty four oh four, we just went through. Section nine. We've got ten through. Twenty left.
I'll tell you, there's only two standards left to review in just a moment, but if you stick with ten for a second. Get through that one and then we can talk about.
Right. So section ten talks about financial and technical. So section ten talks about financial and technical cap- capacity. The subdivider has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section. So we didn't require we a performance bond on us.
No, this, this one is generally too financial and technical capacity. If there's any materials, including resumes. Um, of folks who are. Uh, either doing the design work and or the uh project work. Um, it would be just one from the application material. So if there's. Section of the application, the applicant can call off would be helpful to the board. You can then assess whether you think subdivider is adequate. Financial and technical capacity. I think it's mostly on the technical capacity and the financial capacity is an issue, but you should make findings on there.
Like planned that. Um, verified for this one here. Welcome to assessment provided by certified soil scientists. Site evaluator, you also have a tracker for fire license traffic and therefore the technical capacity. Um, within the um declaration, you have the financial of uh how the units will be funded and eligibility for. Our construction of the England. So I think within the application between. Certifications of the threshold preparing the application of standard discussion of um. How the units will be financed in the uh unit of school if you have adequate evidence to discuss, consider that that standard.
We might ask counsel for the interested parties, although they're anyway challenging financial and technical capacity, they're not, but.
Uh, apart from, apart from the submissions that we've already presented, uh, we have no additional uh. Uh, standard objection regarding. Reserve the uh point three is uh in record to the state.
What do you think, Tracy?
I, I could say that the standard. Based upon the evidence uh presented regarding the section ten financial and technical capacity. Find that the, the standard has been met.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. So section eleven.
You essentially determined this one based upon your earlier review of shorelands of them. But um I think it would be hopeful to statewide, neither. Um, this main standard at eleven plus the, the substandard under A. Cause you're not putting outstanding rivers segment, why that these are N A. So just.
Sure. So it's section eleven, surface waters, outstanding river segments. It says whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of any pond or lake within. Two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland great pond or river as defined in title thirty eight, chapter three, subchapter one, article two dash B. The proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of that body water or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that. Body of water. Greg, are there any bodies of water nearby?
No shoreline zone affecting the property, so uh there are surface.
So therefore, sections uh forty four oh four. Point eleven, surface waters and outstanding river seg- segments is N A.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four point twelve groundwater. The proposed subdivision will not loner in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of. Groundwater. Your on town water.
Like, on town water is not extracting and you have uh. Uh preventing sedimentation and erosion control or a tab eight. And uh cleansing and treatment of storm water on their set at sixteen. Um, which is in place to protect quality of ground water.
So it's sixteen.
Uh sixteen and eight.
Given the evidence presented, uh. Section twelve round, uh, the standard has been met.
You guys more second. All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four point thirteen flood areas. Based on the federal emergency management acts, flood boundary and floodway maps and flood insurance rate maps. And information presented by the applicant, whether the subdivision is in a flood prone area, which. It was tab four, Greg.
That's correct.
Indicated that you are not in a flood zone. You're not even in the shoreline zone. Therefore, section forty four oh four. Point thirteen is N A.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four point fourteen freshwater wetlands.
This one's also um not applicable based on your earlier finding reason for our levels on the property per the application.
Did you say section uh fourteen or thirteen?
Fourteen.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Randolph, I'll second that.
All right, Meredith, got it. Uh, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Forty four. Forty nine, yes, forty four oh four point fourteen dash eight farmland.
No farmland in a.
There you go.
But that's gotta be a board if motion.
Yeah, so.
Based upon the evidence presented, section fourteen dash A farmland uh is not applicable.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four dot fifteen river stream or brook. Also N A is. Based upon the evidence provided, there are no river streams or brooks.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley. I, I did that out of order and Meredith.
You're forgetting about me, uh, Randolph, I.
All right, and uh section forty four oh four sixteen storm water. The proposed subdivision will provide for adequate storm water management, Greg.
Can you write a exhibit ten grading plan between the two? The storm water management system. And then there's also ever due to sixteen, which is storm water management report. The trial litigation evidence to reduce the uh runoff and. Ten for the grading plan, exhibit sixteen, storm arm management.
Tracy Keller, uh, for um section forty four oh four point sixteen storm water. Uh, this, based upon the. Uh, evidence presented, the standard has been met.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section forty four oh four seventeen spaghetti lots prohibited. It's N A.
But that's gotta be.
Yeah, it's because it's N A because uh says that if any lots and proposed subdivision have shore frontage on a river stream or brook. They, or a great pond or coastal wetland, they don't. So section forty four. Oh, four seventeen is N A.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Forty four oh four eighteen lake phosphorus concentration.
Now the lake here.
N A, you are not on a lake.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Forty four oh four nineteen, we're almost there. In, impact on adjoining mun- municipality. For any proposed subdivision that crosses munish- municipal boundaries. This is N A, you're not crossing municipal boundaries.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. And forty four oh four. Twenty. Land subject to liquid harvesting, liquidation harvesting. Says timber on the parcel being survived, subdivide has not been harvested in violation of rules.
And for, sorry, this.
By the.
It's pretty much larger.
There is, yeah.
It's totally not N A.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph, I.
And myself, William Manley, I. So now that concludes our review of. Section forty four oh four state standard.
Subject to coming back on.
So, yeah, some, subject to coming back on section nine. And now we go back to the subdivision ordinance and. We are on section five point three.
That's a good question before you go to five point three.
Yep.
Um, could the board make uh an ominous finding? That the um were uh standards um uh referenced in section five point two are met? Because you're on screw all those.
So five two. Five two says that the proposed subdivision shall be in accordance with all pertinent local, state and federal. Organizations statutes, laws and regulations.
Didn't we already have a vote and? I mean.
On the best vote, I did, can, do you find the evidence of a? Uh, a completed period in five point two? I was looking back in my notes.
I spoke about it, I read.
I do not, uh, isn't that the one that refers you to the section six A D and C?
Right.
Okay. I think that's where you went, but but I, you'd have to look at the record in the last minute. Last many minutes are not.
What I'm referring to is the first sentence, Mister Chair, members of the board, the proposed subdivision shall be in accordance with all pertinent local. State federal ordinances, statutes, laws and regulations.
What, we're not done yet, though.
Oh, so you want to come back and reserve on the first sentence of five point two?
Uh, well, I think we have to because it sounds like the same kind of language that we.
Just make sure the record at this moment reflects that that's what you're gonna do.
Are you got, Meredith, are you okay with that?
Oh, that's great.
That's fine with me.
Dave.
Yep, just do a quick motion to defer. Final review of the first sentence of five point two until all.
Okay, Tracy Keller, I make a motion to defer um deciding upon section five point two until the remaining.
Five point two at first sentence.
Oh, five point two, the first sentence of it, until the remaining portions of section five have been gone through.
Five point three.
Right, section five point three.
That's just a motion.
Yes. Yeah, you threw me off there.
Sorry, my fault, my bad.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Meredith.
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Now we're doing section five point three of the subdivision ordinance. And that talks about construction prohibited. No utility installations, no ditching, grading or construction of roads, no grading of land or lots and no construction of buildings. Shall be commenced on any part of the proposed subdivision until a final plot plan of subdivision has been prepared, submitted, reviewed, approved. And endorsed as provided by this ordinance nor until an attested copy. Of the final plot plan so approved and endorsed has been recorded by the subdivider and the registry of deeds. Plans for road construction, grading and ditching shall be reviewed by the board, construction of improvements necessary to ensure compliance with the requirements of the. Subdivision ordinance may be permitted upon written approval of the planning board.
Sounds more like a condition.
Yeah, it's, okay.
I don't know how we go on that. It's, it can't be done yet.
Yeah, how do you?
So what about the last sentence? That's the only question I have, otherwise I agree with you all.
So the last sentence again, construction of improvements necessary to ensure compliance with the requirements. Of the subdivision ordinance may be permitted upon written approval of the planning board.
That's the time of construction. And then the prior sentence, plans for road construction.
Plans for road construction, grading and ditching shall be reviewed by the board. The, I mean, this sounds like marching orders.
It's, it's, yeah, it's. It's, it's hard to say that there's a review standard there, but um. Do we, does the board think that? The purpose of the second to last sentence, plans for road construction, grading and ditching should be reviewed by the board. Is the purpose of that sentence to make sure that a raw land subdivision, which typically would have a road. For purposes of access, interior access to lots, that's what we're starting on. Cause again, this is a development subdivision, so um.
So it sounds like a portion of five point three is N A. And then the, the other sentences of five A are just making sure that. You know, they're not proceeding with any kind of construction until there's approval.
And I think it's just written to, to clarify that you're not even allowed to push the dirt around until you get full. Full approval. And.
Yeah. Okay, so how do you have a? A finding on that?
Well, no.
Um, yeah.
Uh, other than the instruction of the construction prohibited. Uh, would be appropriate that we have presented grading and ditching plans that the board has reviewed. So at least noting that we have instructions, we can't start till you sign the plot. The board has uh. Reviewed the plans under tab ten, which shows grading and ditching and found inappropriate. I think would be um. Um, part should be part of our. You have great addition.
Yeah.
So, so more management plan back set up, so um even though. The first part is more instructive, I think the latter part, there is a standard to consider.
Is that the tab ten?
Tab ten and uh.
How about? Or how about we just make a motion to say that the board and the applicant recognize? Section five, three and agree to comply with the standard.
Right.
Yeah, I think at the end, the challenge is that, um, if I could have a for just for a second, the challenge here is that. The board is acting as the municipal review authority, not as. The board is acting as the municipal review authority, not as either the drafting committee or enforcement. This really, I think, is in the nature of enforcement provision. But saying you can't proceed to go until you've got a final plat. Uh, of the subdivision compared submitted review approval. Do I recall correctly that there is a final plat review? Provision in this subdivision ordinance, maybe maybe the thoughts of the code officer would be helpful too, because. What I don't want to do is um make a finding we don't need to make or shouldn't make. Um, the one thing that I've seen in the language is plans for road construction, grading and ditching shall be reviewed by the board. I think the grading and ditching, though, we gotta be careful that. We're not trying to determine the question of whether this is a road or driveway, again, in context of this, so I would just say. The board notes that grading and ditching plans have been presented and have been reviewed by the board, period. The remainder of the standard is not applicable. At this time, because it's it's a it's a temporal requirement. That it really speaks to, you don't start construction until a final plat is. That's why I wanted to look in the ordinance and see, isn't there a final plat review? Or are we into that?
We are in that. Yeah, we're doing that.
Okay, so I think just that one sentence, um plans for road construction. Which is called plans for grading addition have been presented and reviewed by the board. And preserved about the interested party as well as the applicant. The right to get back into the driveway versus roadway discussion if they need to. Based on a future review standard, I think we come back to that some place. Like five point fourteen.
Yeah, five fourteen is street design and construction.
I just, I take a motion on just grading and ditching plans have been reviewed by the board. Because that's, that seems to be the only directive provision to the board. The others are to the um applicants more in the enforcement contracts. It's just the code officer's job, not the planning board's job.
I would agree with that.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion that. To say regarding section five point three, uh, construction prohibited, that um. The plans for road construction, grading and ditching have been reviewed uh and considered by the board.
Yeah, just just avoid the.
Oh, plans for construction, grading and ditching.
Yeah.
Shall be have been reviewed by the board.
That's right. You could use the word access, because that's what it's really connected to, access instruction vision, but that's fine.
Dave Ashmore second.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Section five point four of the subdivision ordinance, ditches and catch basins. The board may require the installation, ditches, catch basins, piping systems and other appurtenances for conveyance control or disposal of surface water. Any culvert shall be at least fifteen inches in diameter, adequate drainage shall be provided so to reduce the danger of flooding and erosion. Greg.
Piping and the road entrance, which is the whole cover is designated as fifteen inch.
Which the standard has been met.
There even any need for culverts?
Well, under the driveway entrance.
Is the culvert at least fifteen inches?
Yeah, that's what he just said, it's noted on the C one plan on tap ten as a fifteen inch culvert.
I would treat this as a review standard.
Yeah, um so that the section five point four based upon evidence submitted. Um, has been met.
Tracy Keller so moved.
Dave Ashmore second.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
And all five.
Myself, William Manley, I. Session five point five easements. The board may require easements for sewage, drainage, utilities or public access. Do you need any easements for that?
So the board may require them um for sewer, the onsite sewer is uh internal to the property is private. The right way, so there's no reason necessarily inside the property. Um, the water um uh again, the word. May require for the water, the water will not be uh handed over to the water district, it was tested. Yeah, and and pretty by those, I didn't see any easements required uh that the board would uh impose. All the others are manhandled.
I mean, you you have access for all those items without the.
There's the water district and there's the sewer district, that's not really, that's correct, you've got, you've got a lot line that's right up against the public way.
Yeah, it's a wide, yeah, so technically five point five is N A.
Or it's mad either way. Well, I'd say I think you're right, Chairman, um because.
We're not.
You're not going to require it because none are needed, you're in a public way.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just add something to that uh to be clear that? There will be uh, the board can't. Required even for the water and the district can't accept it until it's tested, and so. Uh, I think it's put that the board isn't imposing any because it would be the district that required.
So I think this provision is designed for the traditional land based subdivision. Um, where you really do have to get out to a public way. Using easements and it would be typically the sewer or water district that would say to the board, we think we need an easement. But it does say the board may require easements for sewage, drainage, utilities or public access, so. If we need to say the standard is not as opposed to not applicable, then. I think there needs to be a query to. The public utilities to say whether they need, I don't think they do. This, doesn't this lot bought up against, doesn't the exterior boundary of this lot bought up against the public way?
Yes.
So why is there any easements necessary?
There are no easements necessary that the board would require. The water. If tested and approved would be. Have an easement for operation by the water district, which is not an easement the board would impose.
Yeah, I think maybe a difference, um distinction without a difference, but um. I I think the findings should be, um, because the. Project. Is on a lot that completely touches the public way on both sides. Um, this is not applicable, the board, the board doesn't have to require easements. Because of the context of this project. Isn't that effectively correct?
Kind of what I was getting at. I've, I, I mean, maybe we make a motion relative to the law about butting public way on two sides that the board.
Okay, um, given section five point five easements, um, the. The board. Uh, because of the um.
Not abutting to public ways.
A lot about two public ways and there there won't be any. Uh, need for easement to be given by the board for sewage, drainage, utilities or public access.
There there won't be a need for the board to require.
To require easement.
Right.
The um. This is not applicable.
I agree.
Dave Ashmore second.
Right, all those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Manley, I. So Andy, uh, explain this one to me in the board. Five point six dedication for year round housing and all it says is reserved.
That's a legislative word, that means that. The legislative body has reserved that section in case something needed to be said, nothing has been said, so therefore it's just an open. Uh, question, that's what's that supposed to mean, so you could make a determination N A or you could simply. Though that the ordinance states that it's reserved, but it provides for no standard. So where's your.
Uh, and feeling N A.
Uh, I make a motion, five point six dedication for year round housing. Because it's a reserved section is N A.
Dave Ashmore second.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Okay, section five point seven lots and density. Starts off with five seven point one. And that says that the lot size, width, depth, frontage, shape and orientation and the minimum setback line shall be in accordance with the land use. Zoning ordinance. I understand that to be Andy, that just the. Dimensional configuration of the lot is in accordance with the with Luso.
Yeah, section five point seven is referring to lots. So uh each of those. Very um standards, lot size, width, depth, frontage, shape and orientation is all going to refer back to lot. The lot size, the lot width, the lot depth, the lot frontage, the lot shape and the lot orientation.
The dimensional configuration of the lot is in is in accordance with the with Luso.
Let's find a form of um finding, let's the board's motion.
Uh, so moved.
Dave Ashmore second.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Five seven two. Under lots and density. Where individual onsite sewage disposal systems are to be utilized, the size of each lot shall be based on the soil characteristics and shall at a minimum. As a minimum, conform to M S R A title twelve, section forty eight oh seven dash A is amended. This section five seven point two is. N A because you're not employing onsite sewage disposal systems, you're connecting to the town sewer.
Yeah, I would say that because your project connects to the sound of the sewer. Um, the standard is not applicable.
Tracy Keller so moved.
Dave Ashmore second.
All right, all those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Five seven three. The planning board shall determine if a division of land will be reviewed as a cluster, a workforce or conventional subdivision.
Stop there. We've already made that determination based upon a. A question to the applicant, the applicant caucus, they came back and said, we want this project reviewed as a workforce subdivision.
So based upon that previous finding, then we go to five seven point three. Point two. Non-land subdivisions. In non-land subdivisions, multiple units within a single structure. Overall net density shall be in accordance with the land use zoning ordinance. Section three point five dimensional requirements for districts. Yeah, and then it goes on to section. Five point seven point three point three. Overall net density shall be determined by the total number of proposed dwelling units in the total acreage. Including open spaces and recreational areas within the subdivision. So.
So could I suggest that um the board might break this down into at least two, maybe three components, the first part is just. Confirm based on motion that the planning board. Has determined that the division of land. Will be reviewed as a workforce subdivision, it's actually not. The developmental subdivision, but.
Well, let's have, yes, let's have a finding on that first, based upon the previously submitted.
Maybe just use the word project instead of.
Project.
Yeah, planning board is reviewing the project as a workforce subdivision.
So moved.
I could say so moved.
Andy Ashmore second.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
Randolph I.
Myself, William Manley, I, so we're reviewing it as a workforce subdivision.
And then, as you said, Mr. Chairman, you might want to motion that it's under five point seven point three subsection two. Non-land subdivision. If that's, if that's the view of the applicant, I just want to make sure that there's nothing.
That's correct, right, Greg?
That is correct.
Tracy Keller so moved.
All those in favor Tracy.
Tracy Keller I.
Dave. Meredith.
I'm confused, just the little note saying that it's multiple units within a single structure.
Well, we, so I asked the question.
Yeah, well, we, well, we do have two, what is it, two structures with multiple.
That's true.
Multiple units within a single structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that help, Meredith? Maybe.
I guess I was reading that as saying if it's not a land subdivision, all of the units are in one structure.
Yeah, you know, I I read that Meredith as like the what's in parentheses there is just, it's kind of giving us. Context to a non-land subdivision.
So you'd use it as an example, or in other words, it's an example, it's not meant to be.
Not a, okay, okay, I, Randolph I.
Wait a second, we we had, we had a motion, a second.
Tracy, Dave and Meredith have now.
All right, thanks, and myself, William Hanley, I. And then I would wager, Andy, the third part would be that the. Board makes the determination if the overall net density shall be in accordance with the land use zoning ordinance. Section bot three point five dimensional requirements for districts. And that's section three point five again is the chart in the land use ordinance.
Does it make sense to refer to that?
Well, I think we should, I think we should flip the. The chart in section three point five. Greg, perhaps you could expand upon that.
Yep, we can, I think we'll have to take it in the context of the workforce housing regions. But we would um. Have an exhibit here. Point the density in accordance to ordinance. Doesn't do.
Can I just jump into and say that? You know, relative to the specific wording there, that the overall net density shall be in accordance with Luso. Section three point five dimensional requirements for districts. When you go to that table, section three point five for V R one. It's not really talking about. Overall net density.
Well, it does in the context of minimal lock size. Minimum lot size. Well, units.
And it, it does have, uh, section E workforce subdivision. With a asterisk telling us to go to no K. What that says is that the minimum lot size for cluster subdivision and workforce. Housing development shall only apply to lots in a subdivision that is approved by the planning board under the cluster development provisions.
Well, that is circular. Didn't, didn't we agree that on five point seven point three, we first had to determine? That we were reviewing this as a cluster or workforce area convention subdivision.
Yeah.
Meaning that those are three alternatives and we selected the workplace alternative.
Mm hmm.
Then this says you got to treat it as a cluster subdivision. Kind of a cluster.
Uh, it's the, uh, it reviewed under the provisions of a cluster. I don't think it's saying that, I think it's just pointing you to the section. Five point sixteen that starts off with cluster.
I think, I think that's a fair clarification, and thank you for that. I, I tend to.
Greg, Greg, I want to hear your presentation and what's Mr. Burns has his hand up.
For simulate the bouncing ball. Your is actually instruction. How to calculate density. You don't saw that through, we follow the ordinance. So. We have to talk about the density bonuses subdivision ordinance, um. Sections fifteen sixteen two. That's requirements and bonuses for workforce housing. Shall be calculated from lines A and B. Of the minimum lot size stands in Luso, so I, I want you guys find that section first. Exactly what it says.
Slide sixteen two.
Correct. Yep.
There you found your five point sixteen point two subsection two A. And then the reference to workforce housing.
So housing shall be calculated from lots line A and B of minimum lot size standards.
Five sixteen two.
One, five sixteen point two subsection two density last sentence. What he was working on. I'm ahead to.
To A. Density requirements and density bonuses for workforce housing shall be calculated from lines A and B of the minimum lot size. Standards in the Luso dimensional requirement, section three point six.
Okay, well, that, that's the first cue.
Mm hmm.
Section three point six. This obviously is three point five, thanks for reference, it's the table.
Yeah.
Right, sorry.
It's the table.
It's the table. Line A and B, let's go find line A and B of subdivision orders.
And maybe it's.
Land is same sort. And then, and then a table.
Yep.
One says with public sewer and one says without public sewer.
So ten thousand square foot.
Yes.
All right, go. Section five sixteen two three says you can increase it. One point seven five or seventy five percent of gross residential. Of the site may be permitted for a hundred percent of residents by conveyed to work for housing. So the density bonuses. First thing you need to do. Is we use line A from the table. Didn't tell us to do anything else.
But that says to use line B, but that's nonsensical because that applies to. Without public sewer and you're on public sewer, so you don't have a one acre. Minimum lot size requirement, so we skip B. Even though the ordinance tells us to use lines A and B. I think it means or, and there are law court cases that say, in certain instances, and can mean or.
So it's one, two things you have to do, yeah, we had to find a minimum lot size requirement. And we knew the ordinance allows us a, a one point seven five. Increase. One point seven five homes. Okay. Here, they've asked us to pull line A from the table. Times our minimum lot size. That's how you get density, that's how the ordinance tells you to do it. Tells you, you get one point seven five. Intensity bonus. You have to have line A from the table, that's what it tells you to do. And your lot size.
So give us the citations, I've got five point sixteen point two A, what was the second one, five point sixteen?
Uh, the.
Point two.
Two, two, three. Yep.
One, C, one, three, uh, so C, three.
Six nine two, five sixteen two two C.
Two, C.
So you're taking one point seven five.
Yep.
C two, you mean, not C three.
Yeah.
This is.
C two. C two.
Yeah, increase of up to seventy five percent of the gross residential density. If a hundred percent of the residential units are conveyed with covenants designed to benefit the creation, preservation, workforce housing.
You're taking one point seven five times the lot size.
Now, so why, you, you, you don't have. What tells us to use the lot size? Five sixteen two two says workforce shall use entire lot. We can find that section.
Yep, it's five point sixteen point two two A. A. Middle of the bear. Says.
For the purpose of calculating density for subdivisions that include workforce housing, the area, the entire parcel may be used, including wetland and steep slopes.
Okay, so we, we have all the parts to be pronounced. First, it told us to go get line A. For our density. Then it gave us an allowed increase in density of seventy five percent. Then it told to use the entire lot.
You provide the face of.
Three factors.
Uh, we gotta keep our microphones off, please.
Doesn't tell you to do anything else in the steps, that's the base density, it says this sounds calculated, you calculate from line A. Use the density bonus. And the entire lot area. And you come up with six point eight six homes.
Yeah, so run through the mathematical calculations and to the benefit of the board, so take it slow. They're saying ten thousand square feet, how does that?
It'll be, they can see it. It will be one point seven five. It's density bonus. Ten thousand square foot per unit from the table, line A, as an instructor, right, line A. The density bonus. Five sixteen two two C. Says you're allowed to use the entire lot. All touches. The only place it doesn't tell you to stop, doesn't tell you to. Only has these specific committee ordinance that says, this comes from line A of the sub, of the table three five. Workforce housing uses the entire lot. And you allow the density bonus of one point seven five.
Anybody else having a hard time understanding that?
It's a pretty basic math.
Calculations, just, just walk through each component a little bit slower, I'm not getting what you're saying. One point seven home, five home, where do you get that?
Yeah.
I, I understand, yeah, point seven five, why did you put homes next to that? You mean units?
You determine the number of homes you.
Homes, units.
Yeah.
One point seven units.
Like from homes.
Whatever. How does that relate to the ten thousand square feet, that's my question.
Well, the first thing is.
Is that divided by?
Sure. It's one point seven five.
Yeah.
Divided by ten thousand. Multiplied by our lot area. Use the full lot area. It's a Luso standard, if I made a Luso standard allows one unit per ten thousand square feet.
Right.
What, to get a seventy five percent bonus if it's workforce housing. Or workforce house.
I'm just gonna run my calculator because I should figure out what's going on.
There's a bit more to it if you want to get into. Are units canceled? Oh, that's a whole different discussion. You don't know how to get from point A to B. You should be able to get the answers, the units cancel out to get her inches to feed. Um, and this is the only way you can get from.
Okay. I think I see it now. What I had to do on my calculator was take. His number one point seven five, which I agree is. You get one unit for every ten thousand square feet, if you're workforce housing, you get one point seven five.
Yes.
And you take one point seven five over ten thousand and then multiply by thirty nine thousand. Two hundred and four square feet, you get six point eight six. That, that finally made sense to me.
Well, let me, let me go back. Good, the first, first part is. The ordinance tells you, you go to the table A. The south, it tells you. Line A. You're allowed the one seventy five. And this tells you use the entire lot area. That's. How. The density works. I'm gonna go one step further and say. How it cannot work. I'll give you an example, that maybe. It's been argued. Or has been argued, that we should start, we should do it some way that the ordinance does not require.
Well, 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 I mean, I, I think what we're doing now is you're trying to do advanced for a bottle, or, or any of these.
I didn't hear the question.
Uh, that's something about the record, what, what I, what I'd like to do for the benefit of the planning board, just so that for Mr. Mr. Johnston, just for a moment. Does the board understand this base calculation? I finally got it. I apologize for being slow, but I finally got it.
I understand it, Dave, do you understand it?
Yep.
Tracy. Meredith, do you understand the?
Yes.
Okay, so. Does it make sense to then pose the question? That Mr. Burns found. Pose, which is, is this information in the record?
Is this relative to your July fourteenth? Submit. It's.
It's not new information, the lot size information is in the record. The density bonus of, what, seventy five percent is in the record, ten thousand square feet, that's all in the record.
From an attorney's perspective advising the board, I have to say that the only data point. That's being offered outside the ordinance standards themselves. Is this one thirty nine two oh four square feet, have you heard that before?
Yes.
Multiple bones.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think this is. This is a new set of data points, I think it's just running a calculation. Under their interpretation of the ordinance. If it becomes your interpretation of the ordinance, then that's the basis for climbing. But there's somebody else that has a point that wants to be made. Then they're gonna want to respond to that point, and then we can get to the result. But, but it, 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 it helps to just go stepwise from experience.
Also, GUT math has also provided a very original application.
Yeah.
On page seven, if that.
There, there isn't anything on this, that, that's, that's a data point that represents the acreage of the whole house.
I think what sometimes is, is hard to notice. When the ordinance actually tells you that needs to be calculated from A of table three point five. Uh, we want to verify that the steps are actually outlined when you, when you find it, it's sort of varied, so.
So. Just, I'm looking at that. Very basic calculation, which all the board members understand, but I just want to point out that the. Steps to calculate density for heel way in your July fourteenth. Ah, supplemental. Was, um, it, it's just, it, it's a little bit different, not that the. The. The numbers in consideration and the math is arriving really at anything different, it's just your process of calculation was a little bit different. And that's, you know, just as I'm following along on page forty three and page forty four.
I mean, I think simply that they converted the, the acreage, a point nine to square footages. Where you're spilling three nine two oh four, so.
Yeah.
Difference, that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, so the first calculation on page forty three, you're just taking a. You know, an acre, you know, and as we are at point nine acres for the lot, you're showing how you arrive at thirty nine two oh four.
So prior steps.
That's a prior step, and then, um. You know. Step two, you just again cite the section with the table on three point five for the VR one. Step three, you determine the density bonus percentage increase. From five sixteen point two point two, which we're looking at right here. Where they talk about an increase up to seventy five percent. And then step four, do the math, so you show the forty three, five sixty times point nine to get it to thirty nine two oh four. You take the thirty nine two oh four times one point seven five. So you get, you know, and this is where it, you know, it's just a. Same, same result, maybe different. Explanation here, but you're thirty nine two oh four times one point seven five, you get the sixty eight, six oh seven square feet. And then you divide the sixty eight, six oh seven square feet by the. Minimum allowable lot size of ten thousand square feet, and you arrive at the six point nine units, which, you know, is. You know. The representative of the six point eight six. Units or homes identified in, in your presentation. Mr. Burns, you had your hand up.
I do, um, as the board is aware, uh, the butters have put forward, uh, a, a different means of calculating the, uh. A quick old net density here, um, that is already in the record, um, that, uh. Does not jive with the numbers that have been provided to by the applicant.
What's, what's the record citation?
Sure, so, uh, I'm looking at our, the butters, uh, July. Submission, that was July twenty fourth. Spitted by the butters. Discussing the calculation of, uh, the net density for this one. Um, now. It's important to keep in mind, uh, as the, as the letter notes, that the starting point here is that the workforce housing. Uh, standard provide a bonus to the underlying base density of the lot. Now, the subdivision ordinance tells specifically. How that base density calculation should be reached. Uh, I'm looking at section five point seven. Point three. Point four, five point seven three.
Now, just can we press pause button for a second? So. Andy, I, I thought we enacted a policy with the press. And filming and photography.
Oh, come on.
You know. Lincoln, I really find it.
Really the most important?
No, it isn't, but I really find it distracting that you disregard that, and you're in the front row, two seats away filming you.
Okay, Andy.
Yeah.
Just. Is it really the most important?
So, um. And I'm not trying to rock the boat.
Go back to the language that we agreed on.
The, the, the chair has noted the policy, um, I would ask for conformance by members of the public, including the press would fall. That's all I'm gonna say.
Sitting on the side, just as we agree.
Well, there's a bench. Well, there's a bench down there that's on. Yeah, okay.
This is the most important there.
This is very important. I would hope there's no distractions. This is.
You cannot obstruct me on the recording. Let's go ahead.
So please continue, Mister Burns.
Mister Mills, if you could take your seat. Um, sure. You don't need, no, no, on the bench.
But I need to do.
There you go. That's fine. That'll work. We just wanna be able to see Mister Burns and the applicants.
That's okay.
Please continue.
As, as been discussed previously, uh, there's a lot that goes into these numbers, uh, the math is, uh. Deceptively complicated, I would say. Uh, as we know in our July submission. Uh, the first question here is, what is the underlying base density of the lot? Now, the applicant has submitted that the total square footage of the lot is thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four square. Uh, as noted, the butters, uh, have, uh. Proposed, uh, different numbers based on the overall calculation, uh, that goes into that number. Um, it's irrelevant here for the, our purposes. Um, so assuming a, a total lot size of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four square feet. The subdivision ordinance under, uh, section five point seven three three. States that overall net density shall be determined by the total number of proposed dwelling units and the total acreage within the subdivision. So.
Mister Burns, before you go to the next one, may I just come back and ask you a question about what you just said?
Sure.
So five point seven point three subsection three. Is not the section that the chair referenced when he determined that we've got a non-land subdivision.
That is true, Attorney Hamilton. However, uh, five point seven three three provides a. Uh, statement about how overall net density is determined, which is. Uh, a term that is used in sub two. It is a, uh, it is a instruction. As to how you arrive at overall net density. Per sub two.
Well, Mister Burns, I have to say, we know this is a subdivision ordinance that governs both. Land subdivisions and developmental subdivisions, correct?
That is, that is irrelevant for the calculation that I'm doing.
No, it's very relevant because two. It, it allow me, two refers to non-land subdivisions. It's not clear to me. That three is intended to apply to normal land subdivision, because the more specific. In section five point seven point three is found in subsection two, non-land subdivision. So I don't see how you get to three. Um, unless you've got some special. Um, way of interpreting three that ignores the specificity of two.
It comes directly after two, and it describes the term that is used in subsection two. If you indulge me, sir. Mister Chair.
Sure, move on. Go for it.
The base density of a, so using that calculation, uh, we would determine, and, uh, this is, this would refer you back to. Section three point five, uh, the table, uh, that we all agree is applicable here. And the minimum lot size that we all agree is applicable for ten thousand square. The base density, uh, is an easy calculation for subdivision. You take that, uh, that minimum lot size. Uh, and you take the, uh, square footage of the lot and you divide. That number is three point nine two. In a standard subdivision. This, under this calculation, you would be allowed to have three units. Not three point nine, you have three. That is the base density of this lot. If the applicant were not applying for workforce bonus. This board would be able to allow up to three units on this lot, personally, to the subdivision ordinance. The. Density bonus. Provides up to. Up to seventy-five percent. Of additional density. Beyond the base density. Of the law. The base density here. Will be three units. You multiply that. By one point seven five. And you arrive at five point two five or five.
Oh, wait a second, um. You said you're rounding down from three point nine two down to three. In what I just heard, is that correct?
Yes, because three would be the number of units permitted on the underlying lot if the density bonus were.
But how do you deal with the specific provision that is cited to us by the applicant? So respond to the applicant assertion. That we use. The whole parcel density, go back to five point sixteen point two. It says workforce housing, we use the entire parcel density requirements and density bonuses for workforce housing.
Yeah.
And what you're doing is rounding down. So you're chopping off point nine two to get down to three. When it says you use the whole parcel.
Yes, which is thirty, uh, according to the applicant, thirty-nine thousand.
Right. So why wouldn't you take point seven five under your formula times three point nine two? You, you're starting to take three times point seven five. So already, already you're sliding away from what the ordinance directs, aren't you?
We're not. Because again, the ordinance directs you to determine overall net density by the total number of proposed dwelling units. Uh, and the total acreage of the subdivision. It's a simple calculation.
You, you keep pointing to point three of, of five point seven. But I don't find that that's a form. I, I find that it's just a statement, overall net density shall be determined by the total number. Of proposed dwelling units and the total acreage within subdivision. Cause it's a statement. It doesn't say. I, I've done net density calculations under any number of ordinances, and I've never seen one. That doesn't make clear that you, um, take the total number of proposed dwelling units. And divide by the total acreage, just says. Determined by the total number of proposed dwelling units and the total acreage within subdivision. And then. And then related to. The workforce housing provisions under five point sixteen point two. How can you stop under? Uh, and, and what context or signal does five point seven point three three give you? I'm just, I'm troubled because I can't reach the conclusions you reach under the plain text of the, of the ordinance.
The structure of this ordinance, Mister Chair, by name.
Lincoln, why are you continuing?
Because I don't trust your recording. This is very important for Andy to say. I don't object to it.
Disruptive to you.
Nobody's objecting, so why are you making it feel?
Because we adopted a policy.
Yes.
And you've been disruptive in previous hearings. Why, don't, don't tell me how to share.
Okay, I won't be a citizen too.
Yeah. Everybody's in here behaving. You know.
I don't trust the.
Can you?
Documentation.
Can you, can you move back over to the chair just so you're not important? This proceeding is not about you, Mister Mills. And this proceeding is about the.
So we have an audio recording and we're recording this on Zoom.
And Zoom doesn't work.
And we have a policy in place.
Mister Mills, time you're impeding the progress of this proceeding.
Yeah, edit, please.
I'm not, I'm recording something very.
And you're not, you're not obeying by the policy we adopted. No, it is. No, you're not, Lincoln. We were really specific. I'm not obstructing your journalism.
On behalf of the applicant, I find this disturbed, um. This interruption to be, uh, preventing us from moving forward. With the applications consideration, this is the second time since we started the view that we've been sidelined by this kind of stuff. Um, it's very important to the app, this is a. To the applicant, this is a critical application. We're trying to provide a service to the town. We would like to have the board act. We'd like to have the board vote. We think that. However you vote, we wanna move forward. Um, so that we can provide the service to the town, this development to the town. We respect the neighbors. They have a right to present whatever it is they wanna present. I'm not trying to stop that, but no issue. With the board listening to Mister Burns, but if there's a policy on behalf of the applicant, I'd ask that everybody here, including us. Follow the policy. Whatever it is, the policy of the press, please follow it. Let us move forward. We need to get this resolved. We're already at ten of nine. We're gonna get cut off again. And, um, this is costing, um, time. And money, and it's wearing on, on our, um, on.
I hear you. Thank you. Uh, you know, one thing I was thinking too, if there's no objections and where we cut out. Thirty minutes early last time. I mean, maybe we try to push through to nine thirty this time.
I agree, and it would be really helpful not to have any further disruptions. So I'd just say. Conduct yourself reasonably. The policy is clear. Please don't get into the foreground of this proceeding because you are distracting. So. Um, back to Mister Burns.
So, uh, it, the, the. The key thing here is that the numbers that the applicant are using, uh, we, we don't dispute. The underlying, uh, numbers here. It's how the calculation is undertaken and the, the. Equation that the applicant uses obfuscates, it hides. The fact that the underlying base density of this, uh, lot is three units and not. Um, and add a fractional unit in the base density is therefore inappropriate. To include a fractional unit in the calculation of the bonus density, which is what happens. When you utilize that equation, um, and it's more clearly established in the. Uh, documents that the applicant actually submitted. So.
So instead of a lot of this argument, why don't you just come to the point of your formula? Tell us what the elements of your formula are, how you run your formula, and what your conclusion is.
Mister Chair, is that your wish?
Yes.
Thank you. We arrive at our formula. By doing exactly this.
Just give us the numbers if you would.
You take thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four. Square feet, the total lot area. You divide that by the minimum lawn size. And that's worth. You arrive at a base density of three units. That three units, the base density, is then multiplied by one point seven five, the density bonus, to arrive at five units.
The fundamental difference between your calculation is you're multiplying the one point seven five. Against units and they're multiplying it against area.
Yes, and the reason that we use the units as part of our measurement is because it is a unit bonus. That is provided, is a seventy-five percent bonus to the number of allowed units. Therefore, it would be, uh, it would be hiding the ball to. Put it back to a number that is, that is not the total unit.
So to boil this down, um, Mister Burns, I think that was helpful to just hear your formula and your numbers. Um, for everyone, but particularly the board. What Mister Johnston has said is take one point seven. Times three point nine two oh four and you get six point eight six. Well, Mister Burns is saying. Is you round down to three units and multiply that times one point seven five. And you get five point two five units. That's the real difference in the math between the two. And I find that Mister Burns. Interpretation is relying on a concept of base density I don't find clearly articulated. And seven point three three, I also don't see it to be consistent with five point sixteen. Point two subsection two, which says workforce housing will use the entire parcel.
Yeah, so. And Andy, that was what I was keying in on here is that the, under five sixteen point two point two. The second sentence, we're talking, it says, for the purpose of calculating density for subdivisions that include worse. Workforce housing, the area of the entire parcel may be used. So does that then? Aim the calculation to be relative to a multiplier applied to area?
Yeah, it must.
It's, it's not, you know, I, I understand the mu- math of both.
I just. Say something? Uh, just in terms of, I feel like, uh, I understand. Both arguments and. I feel like the, the point about calculating the whole entire lot. For the sake of both of the arguments, we can understand that that's saying you're not cutting out right of ways. Or setbacks or anything like that. That, that would. Fall true. It's just simply. Whether you figure out what the density is. How many units you'd be allowed to have on this lot? Without workforce housing and then. Apply that one point seven five to how many units are allowed? Or are you taking the lot size and calculating that one point seven five? So you haven't calculated out what the units are yet. You establish how many units are, are from the lot and. I, I was very open to that argument, but as has been pointed out this evening, if you look at how they tell you to calculate it. It's calculated from line A. It's not calculate how many lots are, or how many units are allowed from line A and then calculate. The one point seven five, it says right from line A, which is the ten thousand square feet. So I'm a, I'm now. I personally am convinced that the applicant has it correct, that they don't, that, that, that. The ordinance does not say. First calculate how many lots are allowed, then. Or how many units are allowed and then calculate that one point seven five additional. Says calculate it from. Line A. And we're talking square, square footage, not, not on dwelling units.
I mean, you're gonna arrive at dwelling units either way, and we're essentially talking about math that's either arrive, we're by. Arriving at six or five. But, uh, again, uh, you know, referencing back to five sixteen point two point two and relative to what you're saying. To Meredith is, it's talking about multiplying it against area.
Not, not the number of units. So he's, he's just the. The opposition is simply saying you calculate how many units are allowed on that lot first. And then you add the, the density increase. And I don't see anything saying the calculation is. You know, the calculation is against. Line A and line A doesn't, isn't saying calculate out the units first and then apply the density. It's saying what's the density? We've established what they allow density per unit is. As ten thousand. Square feet. So anyway, that's. I think the applicant has it correct.
So based upon the call that we, the board has had, um, I would say, remember the public hearing is closed. You've given, um, more than due process to both parties. By allowing them to set forth their positions using formulas, I would ask that we. Um, come back to board deliberations. And let the board now, uh, take all the good information that's been presented. And come to their, their own conclusions because. Um, what the last twenty minutes have revealed to me is that. Nothing's really changed, that both representatives essentially made it easier for us to understand where they're coming from. And that's helpful.
Yeah.
But I think we're there. So I think Mister Burns is good, and I don't think we need any further from the applicant.
I, I don't think we need to hear anymore on this, and I feel like the board understands. Both. calculation methodologies. Is that right, Dave? Tracy. Meredith.
Yes, I think we just now have to decide which calculation. You think is more.
Fair enough. Noted.
Okay. Let's get back to it. So here we are, we're back to section five, seven. Point three. Point two. And again, that says non-land subdivisions, which we are. And that the overall net density shall be in accordance with the land use zoning ordinance. Section three point five dimensional requirements for districts. And then you go back to that, and there's, you know, all the. Minimum lot areas, everything identified in. Square feet. We look at, you know, how the calculation was made per five sixteen. Point two. Point two. We understand the applicant's calculation, we understand the opposition's calculation. We look to five, seven. Point three, point three. And we're at that. And we're at that the overall net density shall be determined by the total number of proposed dwelling units. And total acres with, within the subdivision. So. Andy, if I'm not mistaken, then what? We're looking for on five, seven. Point three is a motion.
Yeah, I, I think that's right. It's, it probably should be as you've suggested, um. A cumulative motion using both five point seven point three. Um, table three point five. And five and sixteen point two. From section two, because, because this is holistic work.
We have to consider five, seven, three, two, and five, seven, three, three in order to arrive at a calculation. And there needs to be a motion in finding that the. The applicant has evidenced a. Calculation that's in accordance with section three point five.
And five point sixteen.
And five point sixteen.
We're working, you're working your way to a cumulative motion. Um, Mr. Chair, as, as others weigh in and.
So they've, they've got that. That fundamental calculation, I mean, regardless of what was presented tonight was. Um, included in their July fourteenth. Um, submittal on page, on page forty-four. Meredith, any thoughts?
I'm wondering whether people are still, um, feeling that they. Uh, uh, need to think about it, or are we ready for a motion and to see which side people are? Decide, you know, all the board members follow on.
You know, in a, in a nutshell, has, have they done the calculation per the ordinance states?
Yeah, and, and. Which argument do people find? Uh, you know, I ca- I understand the two arguments, so I guess we just need to find out from the, I guess I would say. Do you want a motion to move this forward? I don't think there's any, I think everybody should be at a decision by now. Well, I should say that. I don't mean to judge if anybody is.
I agree. No, you're summarizing in the room where people are, I think, Mary.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's essentially a motion again. That they have evidence that they have. Done their density of development calculation per the requirements of section. Five point seven point three point two, five point seven. Point three point three and section five sixteen. And all, all of those sections reference area.
I, I make the, the motion that, that, uh, based on the evidence and the application, the applicant has. Made their calculations correctly calculating. Uh, based on the wording of the ordinances.
Well, I think we should be really specific.
In five point seven point three, referring back to three point five. And calculated from. Five point sixteen. Is there another number?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's three section references. Five, seven, yeah, five point seven point three point two, five point seven. Point three, point three, and five. Point sixteen. And, and when you, when you look at, you know, five, seven, three in general, you know, it's referring us back to that. Um, section three point five table in the land use ordinance.
I'm sure Heidi's got this all written down because it's so clear.
She's gone through a couple pencils, but we'll. We'll read it back.
Uh, the applicant has evidenced calculation in accordance with sections. Five point seven point three point two, five point seven point three point three. In section five point sixteen point two point two, or do you want to take off those final numbers? All section reference area. Um, based upon the evidence, the out, the applicant has correctly calculated.
So, um. I think we're trying to do hard to say what the applicant's evidence. Adds to a formula and, um.
But Andy, you know.
Okay to take a run, uh. Cumulating what you've all said and just see if it works. It, it might read something like this. Based on the evidence presented. By both applicants and interested parties counsel.
Hold on, please.
Yep.
Yep.
Parenthetical, including the July fourteen submittal. Of the applicant on page forty-four. And the evidence presented on October. Uh, and the arguments presented on October eighteen. And applying the standards of.
Hold on, please.
Please, also.
And providing standards on, did you say?
And applying the standards of. Sections five point seven point three. Point two. And point three. In other words, there's two subsections there, Heidi, two and three. And then comma and section five sixteen of the subdivision ordinance. The board finds that the subdivision ordinance and section three point five of the land use ordinance. Yep.
The board finds that.
The subdivision ordinance. And section three point five of the land use ordinance. Report a calculation of the workforce density. Of. Six. Point eight six units.
You just told us not to be too specific.
I thought I heard you say earlier to one of your board colleagues, we need to be more specific. So I was trying to strike the balance.
There's, uh, there's the conundrum.
Because what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to stitch together what you're using as ordinance sections and what you're using as evidence. And I think you did refer to. Page forty-four of the July fourteen submittal.
Yeah.
And I thought that was helpful because that then provides the support.
But what we're talking about is a motion relative to an ordinance that's talking about the. Process of calculation, not necessarily the product of it.
Yeah, I think you would say we first got to decide whether this is based on area.
Yeah.
Versus the number of units.
So we just in, informally agreed and on record that it's based, it's a calculation based on area.
Based on area.
And so I, again, Andy, I, I don't think that this is a. A motion in question of if it's six or five. It's a motion of that they're following the ordinance to arrive that whatever. Whatever result they end up at. That the, the process of calculation is per the ordinance.
Okay, so let me just go with what you've said so far, and then maybe there's gonna be a second motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I think, I can make this one much shorter, Heidi. Board members. Based on the evidence presented, comma. The board finds that the. Workforce density bonus calculation is based. Put it right there. Workforce bonus density calculation.
Okay.
Is based on area. And. The use of the entire parcel.
See, I don't know that that really, it, to me, I, I feel like the opposition. It doesn't cl- really clarify the distinction between the two. I guess it's, it's the, the. Sequencing of the calculation. Whether you determine, whether you calculate. The dwelling units. It's, they're always off of the acreage. It's just whether you calculate the dwelling units first. Off of the acreage or whether you determine the. The, uh, if you give them the density bonus. Off the acreage.
It's, Meredith, I think we have, need to have a motion that's again, just. Specifically tied to the three sections of cat.
And I think we just sa- say that they've correctly, well, I guess, uh, we, yeah, we, we've got a lot. We've got way too much on the table.
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, we've got, and I know it's hard when it's after nine, but.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, and, um, I think it's just a motion that's speaking to that they have calculated the, the. The, the density on this lot per those three sections in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think that's the simplest thing to say.
If we, we don't, it, we're not talking about six or five or, or area versus square foot. We need to reference the order, the, the ordinance sections and that's it.
Here's, how about this then, Bill? Uh, members of the board. How about this, Meredith? Uh, based on the evidence presented. The board finds that the applicant's calculation of the.
Hold on, please.
Let me just get the, the motion on now, come back and parse it if I could, Heidi. Based on the evidence presented. Um, the board finds with the applicant's calculation of the workforce density. Is, uh, conforms with sections five point seven point three two. Five point seven point three three and section five point sixteen. Don't you want to say?
I think it's as straightforward as that.
Okay. Alright, so to parse it, um, a little bit more carefully, um, Heidi, based on evidence presented. The board finds. That. The applicant's calculation. Of the workforce density of the project.
Yep.
Conforms with. Sections five point seven point three. Parenthetical two. And parenthetical three. Comma. And section five point sixteen, did you want to reference? It's five point sixteen point two. Anything else beyond point two of the ball? Between the different issues? So that would be the motion. It'd be better, Heidi, to make sure that. I said it correctly, then just have me read it back if you would.
Uh, based on the evidence presented, the board finds that the applicant calculation, the applicant's calculation. Of the workforce density of the project conforms with sections five point seven, three and two. In section five sixty, five point sixteen.
You said three and two, it would have been reversed two and three, five point seven point three, two and three. Uh, with two and three in parentheticals, yeah. That's, that I think is the motion.
And.
But it requires a board member to move it.
I think I was moving it. I started off tra- saying that I was making a motion.
Tracy Keller, second. Um, is it when you do the five point, is it five point sixteen point two?
Uh, I cannot get the definitive, okay.
That was a second.
Yes, yes.
Alright, so all those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye.
That's five, seven, point three. Everybody still have fourteen minutes in them? Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, so five eight, we're talking about sewage disposal. Exciting stuff. So five eight one talks about that where any part of proposed subdivision is located within fifteen hundred feet of. Public sanitary sewer line that they shall connect to it. And that they, um, use the sanitary line by means of the main, not less than eight inches in diameter. And however, that the appropriate municipal agency shall first certify that extending the services will not be a burden on the system. Greg? So based upon the evidence submitted to the board. The application is in conformance with section five point eight point one.
So moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Five eight two is N A because there are no. Private subsurface sewage disposal systems proposed. You guys are connecting to town sewer.
Uh, Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave? All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
And myself, William Manley, aye.
Yeah, five nine, land not suitable for development. The board shall not approve that such portions of any proposed subdivision that are located on a land below sea level. Or within a hundred year floodplain. You guys are in the village residential district.
Divert four, there's no floodplain on the property.
And therefore, section five point nine, land not suitable for development is N A.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
You guys, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye.
Five point ten, open space provisions. Five ten point one. The board may require that a proposed subdivision design include a landscape plan that will show the preservation of existing trees. Ten inches or more in diameter, the replacement of trees and vegetation. Graded contours, streams, and the preservation of scenic, historic, or environmentally desirable areas. The street and lot layout shall be adapted to the topography, extensive grading and filling shall be avoided. Greg?
And where it has a grading plan that shows that we drop the grade as we go along the building size to match the geography. Uh, under tab, uh, that would be tab. Ten, the, uh. The minimized and cutting vegetation that is one thirty-five trees there. On the landscaping plan, which is provided on tab twelve. Uh, including additional trees being planted are, are, are about sixty-three and that includes what, another twenty-eight dogwoods. That's all shown on the land, people plan. I think we've talked about the scenic and historic, uh. And environmentally sensitive areas and.
Are, are you showing the preservation of existing trees ten inches or more in diameter on that landscape plan?
There, you can see them around the perimeter that are shown as a different symbol of existing trees to be preserved.
Am I looking at the, Emma, or should we be looking at the Emma Kelly plan?
Well, I see where it delineates evergreens. Is there some other symbol here? Existing tree shall remain, yeah.
Existing tree, yes, the last item.
Yeah, the existing tree shall remain.
And you. How does that, those are more than thirty-five trees remaining. Um, and one, who was the ones defining, you'll get more than six trees, I think, Mr. Dogwood.
I mean, unless, um. I know it's late in nine twenty and just in, you know, with the, um. Trying to maintain the continuity of spec- specificity in the review, just I'm not seeing on either Emma's plan or the L one plan. Trees specifically mentioned of ten inch, ten inches or more in diameter. Existing trees. I mean, I see the existing trees shall remain symbol. And many trees on there indicated as such, but there's no indication of diameter.
I would say that the ones that were in the entrance road, which you can see in the photo exhibits. Um, are probably more than ten inches and those are being, yeah, twenty-four and higher. I think also that that term. Does the board need to require? Design a landscape plan. Um, it, it's certainly give two, three trees greater than ten inches along the road. And then supplementing, those terms are all trees ten inches or more.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, again, for me, just looking at, making sure that we've got a plan with tree diameter indicated.
Tab ten.
Tab ten.
So you build, actually, actually, it's trees.
I'm gonna need stronger reading glasses.
Even correlates, including that plan and the landscape.
Yeah, so you had the. Eight inch. Like up at the corner of Neighborhood Road in Manchester, you have the eight inch tree, the. Twelve inch. Over on. Neighborhood Road, you've got a ten inch spruce, uh. Fourteen inch white pine, uh. Sixteen inch. White pine. And I assume those are on the plan because they're existing trees, ten inches or greater that are gonna remain.
That's why we put one of them.
Here you go. And that's. You're gonna see one plan again on. Tab ten.
So what are all the, so we just haven't reviewed?
Uh, we, we had the C one plan on tab ten, and then you had the, um. And twelve. Emma Kelly landscape plan. And then you had the L one plan. As well. On tab ten, also from Emma Kelly.
So. What would be your thoughts, Mr. Chair of the board, on how you articulate upon this?
So, let me just ask, are you guys okay with the existing trees to be? The existing trees ten inches or more. Or let me rephrase that. Is the board okay with that a landscape plan has, or a landscape plan has been submitted showing the preservation of existing trees ten inches or more in diameter? Based on those three drawings we just referenced? For you see?
Well, did any of the trees specify that they were ten inches in diameter?
Well, yeah, we've got a couple identified.
So we've been to the site, we've seen what was there to begin with. So we know that they're preserving the trees that are there. They can't preserve something that isn't there. So they're preserving everything that is there.
Not necessarily.
Well, quite a bit.
Yeah.
And they're adding to it as well.
They are taking down to have the units in. There's a bunch of trees that are being taken down, but I'd say that they've noted that they're keeping all the ones that aren't. Once they can keep. Still put houses in there.
I think the landscape architect could have indicated the tree diameters on the. Lance colored landscape plan and the L one plan. Then with.
Is it C one that does show?
Yeah, the C one plan is really the. Yeah, that's the. It.
What does that say? What are those things? I can't read that.
Yeah, so they're, they're. They're indicating like four inch wide walkway. The deck elevation.
Okay.
The buffer, there's a buffer planting note. You guys want the tree diameters labeled more on the plans? Are we good with what we have?
It looks good, but do we need to have them labeled to conform with that or?
This.
Yeah.
May, okay.
When we may require it, are we requiring it? No. Meredith?
Uh, I'm, I'm using my phone to magnify the plan now. Um, but I would say, uh, the only difference. The, the landscape plan does say existing tree canopy on a bunch of them. And to see that it's larger than ten inches, you just have to go to the other plan, but I think they. You have to cross-reference two plans. But it still seems to me all the information is there. She's saying which existing trees are staying. She hasn't had, hasn't said that they're ten inches, but. I think it's fine.
Okay. Alright, so maybe we get a motion on. Five, ten, one. And then it's nine thirty.
I'll give it a try. Uh, for the provision five, ten point one, open space provisions. Um, given the evidence presented. I think that, I can't remember the other, we have the.
Uh, that the board is not requiring a.
Oh, okay.
A landscape plan further. Showing the preservation of the existing trees, ten inches or diam- diameter. So, or should we?
Could I have some legal advice?
Thank you.
Okay, so what I would do is. I would look to submit a C one plan. And say that that shows the preservation of existing trees. Does that say preserves all existing trees? The ordinance standard says. You gotta have a plan that shows preservation of existing trees, ten inches or more in diameter. Does it also show the replacement trees?
No. We need to go to the landscape plan for that.
Okay.
But I actually. C, C one only says the diameters and it's, uh, the landscape plan that says remaining existing. I think, I think C one shows trees that are being taken out because they're ones that are in the middle of the road.
You know, it would just be so much clearer if the L one, if the L one plan said that.
Here's a suggestion. I don't think it would pay a lot of time to do that on L one then. It may make it easier to come back to the single standard because I think you're essentially saying from a landscape perspective. You don't have a problem with the project, but you have a, an issue as to the sufficiency of the evidence. Um, and so you are allowed during your deliberations to ask the applicant to produce something. If you find that you can't find conformance of the application with the standard, so they could come back with a simple landscape plan detailing. And if we could stop there.
I, I think it's a simple augmentation of the L one plan.
Yeah. The applicant is always entitled to comment as to whether they find that to be.
First, it says the board may, uh, we've shown in the setback, all the large trees being preserved. We've been to the site and recognized the large oaks around the outside are being preserved. We then did show the trees that are greater than ten inches, the entrance being preserved. And then we go to landscape plan and actually says existing trees to remain. So. I feel like this thing should be for the major department. I think we have provided. Several instances where the trees are greater than ten inches to be preserved. And in multiple places, we've shown that to be preserved. We've shown both going gray.
Go to the standard. Leave five point ten point one with us just for a moment. The board may require that a proposed subdivision design includes a landscape plan that will show the preservation of existing tree. Ten inches or more in diameter. So the landscape plan L one, the chairman has correctly pointed out, doesn't show what you need to show. That's all.
Could I just clarify what I think, what is asking for, so that we can understand what we're gonna be providing, which is we're gonna take the existing landscape plan and label. The trees that we are, that are ten inches or more in diameter that we are proposing to keep.
I think it's, I think it's as simple as that, yes.
You have all the information, you just need to take those little dimension markers and put them on the. L one plan, just.
As easy as that, yeah. It'll, it'll just. I, I, I think, um, as the board chair was signaling, we're hitting nine thirty and there's a procedural discussion we need to have with the party.
Yes.
Um, so we need to get to that. We've all got the fact that. For full disclosure, Mr. Ashmore, David is not required to live in the community's property, and he's decided that he's gonna be moving at the end of October. So. If we want this review to be completed, we gotta decide another night in October, we can do it. So I think we can do that, but. I think what we ought to just do, the motion to defer five point two point one. Five point ten point one until, um, a, 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 a simply revised landscape. Take it up again, because otherwise we're just gonna go around and search.
Yeah, so let's get a motion on to defer. You got it, Tracy.
Well, what are we deferring?
The review.
The review of this particular standard until such time?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion to defer, uh, section five point ten point one regarding open space provisions. Until such time as applicant has a revised. A plan delineating a ten inch.
L one.
L, L one plan.
If we could substitute the words that you used, open space, or just use the word landscape provision.
Okay, landscape provision, landscape provision.
Yeah. I'll do it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Manley, aye. So let's talk about the procedural. Next steps.
So we've got, um, a few days left in October. Um. My question of the parties and the board is, when can you? The board is inclined to move this along before we lose Mr. Ashmore.
So next. The.
But let's clarify though, that we've got a regular planning board hearing on October twenty seventh. So a week from this Wednesday, and we've got. Two items on the agenda which are essentially, Kim, if I understand this right, they're, they're before us to determine if they need to come before us.
And before you, so because under. Step two. I'm not gonna take them there. Uh, is there not? There are uses of the property you are not specified in the permitted use chart? And so the planning board has to review. Um, the uses to see if they're similar. To the uses of the chart, and that's why you got the people counting before you, is to help you, help them determine their use to see if they're. Qualified for something similar in the permitted use chart and landing zone.
Okay, so we've, we've done this before and that hasn't been high hanging for. Yeah.
In other words, it's low and it's pretty easy to get through.
Yes. I said it's not high hanging.
It's, that's what I, I'm personally. So, um. The, the board thinks that one more meeting. Good, complete the board's review. It's unclear, it's gonna complete every time's review, but the planning board's review is what we're focused on before October thirty.
I, I would, I would certainly hope there's only one more hearing at the absolute max two.
So if, if it's possible that it's two, the twenty-fifth one, do it.
But I feel like we should maybe. Get these guys on the calendar for next week, Wednesday. For that hearing, get as far through it as we can, because these first two things, I, I don't foresee as even taking an hour.
Is, is the, the twenty-fourth even within the realm of possible?
So the twenty-fourth is Tuesday.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd have to see if the rules available to.
Well, that's my schedule, I'm bumping against the time.
For it's not on the Tuesday, but.
But I'm suggesting as a two-step, that you, if you did a review on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and you finished, then you're done. If you're not, then you could finish up on the twenty-first. Cause the thirtieth. And the thirty-first of the next week.
Sounds like it's an idea to me.
I, I don't wanna affect Mr. Ashmore's transactional days.
Yeah, as of the thirtieth, I'm not gonna be.
Again, so that tells us it's gotta be. The week of the twenty-third, which is next week.
If it closes. Yeah, it'll close.
How about the, Mr. Chairman, through you, how about to the parties, um, should they make the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth work?
What do you think? The twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth?
I say the twenty-fourth.
But if it were. To extend to the twenty-fifth.
How long do you get?
Noel will be here. And what's on the. Agenda then? Oh, yes, you are here that night.
Looking at the calendar, the twenty-fourth, there's no other town meeting scheduled on the twenty-fourth, just on the town website calendar. The twenty-fifth is just the planning part. The twenty-fifth is just the planning part.
Twenty-fourth going once.
Meredith, the twenty-fourth?
Are we waiting for Kim to verify there's nothing secret, some secret meeting, it's not on the calendar, happen there? I'm fine with it anyway.
Twenty-fourth. The twenty-sixth. Do you wanna do it earlier?
No, earlier. Twenty-four.
Could do it at five minute. That might help us finish it up.
Yeah, yeah, what happens if we did it earlier, Meredith, like at five?
That's fine.
I I say, I say we look at the twenty-fourth at five, um just checking the new Mr. Burns, twenty-fourth at five. Uh stop, great. And thank you to all the parties, I think that's, that's gonna be a wise spending here down. Twenty-fourth at five, Dan.
There you go, so let's have a motion to continue the hearing to them.
I make a motion to continue this hearing to date certain of uh October twenty-fourth at five P M. In this room.
You guys, one second.
Right, all those in favor, I'll let Dave lead this one. Dave?
I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Meredith.